Here. Barbara Thomas, here. Sharon Hammerhand, here. Mary Ann Nowak did call and send her regrets. She's unable to attend but hopes to be at our next meeting. Okay. Let's see, prior meetings minutes, I think. We do have a forum. I'd like to go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the prior meetings minutes. That is from April 28. If there are any amendments to those minutes, I would take them. If there are none, then I would look for a motion to approve.
So move second.
Dr. Kaver?
Yeah.
Move. And Ms. Thomas, second. I will call the roll. Dr. Kaver?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas. Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Ms. Forbes-Fields?
Yes.
Sharon Henry?
Yes.
Okay, let's go on to the report of the financial supervisor.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Today's report is somewhat small. What I'd like to do is draw your attention to the packet that's in front of you. Having to report that through April, everything's reconciled. You are to the pay at the end of April. The financial packet in front of you reflects the bank recs at the top with a book balance of $125,000. Kind of small, but about $125,000 per bank. Then we have the police department account as of the end of February, and then the court accounts as of the end of April. So there's our cash. The next page, page two, we still have the 15 deficit funds. No change there. The total deficit is about $3.8 million, rounding. Page six. There are some monies that aren't coming in as quickly as we had hoped. Again, grant monies, court monies, EMS fees. That's what makes up those fee funds on page six. Again, monitoring those, making sure that expenditures don't exceed those revenues. Page seven. This page tells us at the end of April, we should be at about 33 percent. Any department or fund that is over 33 percent is listed on page seven. The lion's share of any overages is due to salaries and benefits. Simple as that, it goes to the expenditures. Again, monitoring them, watching. You can see we're going to get close at the end of the year, not over. That's how we get to November, December. It's going to be.
The mayor's not here at the moment, but I would be interested to hear. I'd be interested in hearing what his plan is because he can't expend, I mean, the city can't expend more than their appropriations. So it needs, the city needs to look at reducing its ranks and/or cutting down on overtime.
The domestic violence month, is that a grant that we're waiting on currently?
It is, yes.
Speaking of grants, I was concerned about the Voca grant, which is below that. The spending is over 33. It's at 40.7. And if you look at the previous page, they've only got maybe 23 percent of the revenues. So that's our real concern right there, too. Victims of Crime Act, it's federal funding. And I don't know, I know that the city gets state victims assistance monies. That's no match, but the federal dollars, the Voca dollars, it's 75/25. I talked to the H.R. Department, actually, because they administer it for the feds. And I also discussed with the person who deals with East Cleveland as well as a bunch of different entities that traditionally, I guess would be the word, East Cleveland has difficulty in finding the match. And if they don't find the match, they get whatever the match would have been, they get that much less in federal dollars.
And how are we managing the block grant?
The block grant?
The block grant?
You have to spend that.
Yeah, dispense people.
Correct. And then you give them the benefits. So, then we can get the block grant, you want to say?
No, I believe the city's current requesting reimbursement on their payroll. In any of the other big projects, they turned in the receipts and have that three-day turnaround to turn in the expense to get the refund.
So what we'll have to keep an eye on though? It doesn't look like we're getting the revenues like we anticipated, or maybe we're going to get less in the second half of the year or more in the second half of the year.
I can check on that with the person who does it and have more of an answer next time. Yeah, we'll check on that.
The city's made all of its payrolls current in pension. Unfortunately, we still have our list of accounts payable. And I'm going to ask you to go to that next, with your aging report. And I'm going to have Tisha talk a little bit about the aging report because she changed the format of it for us. Can you get a little more?
Okay.
What I did was, the front is basically the summary. The top part of it are all the normal bills, whether they're less than 30 days, between 30 and 60, 60 and 90. And you can see the total miscellaneous bills comes to about $452,000. Then I pulled out some of the bigger items, the Illuminating Company, Pikeville County, Northeast Ohio, the Ohio Machinery Act, because I believe it's been a topic at this commission meeting historically. Below those bills, I have either settlements or repayments schedules that the city has agreed to. And you can see, for example, Morton Salt. The city settled the payable at about 50 percent. And Morton Salt accepted a payment in March of '15, which the city made. And the next one is not due until October. So although it's on my list, they're not delinquent on that. Same with Inover Solutions. You can see there's a monthly repayment for that. After that is Love Insurance, which they pay monthly. And you can see they are current on that.
What is Love, too? I mean, I know some insurance, but what type?
I believe it is, is it liability or under new trusts? It's one or the other.
Okay. Okay, with the new trusts.
And then the rest is what you normally see, the lawsuits broken out. And then the health care on the bottom, broken down between the TPAP pharmacy claims, medical claims, and the third-party administrator audits of the claims. Behind that and all the other pages are the detail as to what makes up the miscellaneous bills.
What's the debt or deliverable, whatever you want to call it, for Kayoka County? I notice it's over $163,000 as owed. Did you research on that? Somebody asked the last meeting.
I called the county. I looked at the bills at the finance department's office. Part of that, approximately $11,000 of that is a sanitary sewer maintenance fee that the city pays. The other portion of it is actually delinquent property taxes that the county says the city owes them. I currently have the housing department looking into one of the specific parcels to see if they have a, I think it's like a conveyance in lieu of property tax for something, for land that may have gone into the land bank. And if they can produce that document, then the county wipes out the delinquent taxes. So we're doing some research to see if we can get that number down. But at least according to the county's records, the city owes them $163.
And then next, any questions on the payables before I come to the next? The next, I believe Dr. Kaver requested something at the last meeting. And what this tells you is by fund, the number of employees which are the departments, their average per pay, and then simply multiply that times 26 to give you an annualized amount. So that gives you a list of employees. Is this what you were looking for?
Yes, this is, thank you.
Sure. That's all I have for today. Any questions, Anita?
So currently, if we go back to page seven, for the general fund, what is, I'm a little off just because of the way the numbers are captured here, but what is the projected year-end general fund budget?
Currently, the appropriations are set at page 14, $11,092.
Okay. And if we're spending with the departments who are over budget, is there a space that says that that number, if things continue, is 11.4%?
No, we have, we are not adjusting it out.
We can't at the end of the meeting.
I think if you can. Remember those are the size of the annual problem for this.
I don't have a problem with that. I would just add the fact that these departments that are overspending should be made aware of their budget and should provide information as to how they're going to stay within their budget because that's the whole reason behind the appropriations. I believe the appropriations were set based on the expected revenues. So again, there's this disconnect. You can't just keep spending. You only have a set amount of revenues and you need to stop. Are there any other questions? Okay. Mayor?
Thank you. As is reported in a few cases in the auditor's remarks, staff remarks, we're working on negotiating our payables one at a time. There are some agreements in place. There have been some reductions. Every little bit means something. Every little bit means a lot. I wish every little bit really meant a lot, but every little bit means every little bit. But one by one, we'll get those done. We've had a couple of staff reductions. We anticipate more. Human resources, we have named an interim human resources director who is already a city employee. We will essentially save $53,000 in cash salary if that management continues, as well as the cost of a benefits package for a family. So just one of the things that we have done. A few police officers will depart or have recently departed. And as you know, more than likely, we replace full-timers who depart with part-timers. Not exactly the thing that unions love, but something that is a necessity in East Cleveland, the effort to preserve the number of police officers on the street while decreasing the cost per officer. So we anticipate some savings there. On fire, the action that this commission approved, the part-timers, reinstatement of the ability to hire part-timers is beginning to pay off. As you know, we'll see that in the coming months with the reduction of overtime with the minimum manning clause. If we're unable to have part-timers, as we have been unable to have them in the past, then the cost of overtime goes up. And if we're able to have part-timers, then the cost of overtime goes down. We are working on the Financial Recovery Plan. Just a few items from that plan. It's still in draft form. We've got to button down a few things, which will, of course, become unbuttoned when we button it down. But on the revenue side, there was the recent passage of legislation increasing the EMS fees, a believed increase of $200,000 in revenue there. Small number, options on possible cell tower sites, $10,000. Amendment to traffic camera collections agreement, estimated revenue of $100,000. On the expenditure side, new rubbish hauling contract that we're negotiating. We hope to save $100,000 there. The budget reductions I just mentioned in human resources, $70,000. Budget reductions from the police department, $400,000. Budget reductions from the fire department, $400,000. All for a total of $970,000. The projected shortfall before these changes, $939,000. So we've got some here between the revenue and expenditures that we believe will put us in line with where we need to be in terms of the necessary reductions and revenue enhancements.
I guess, I don't remember if you were in the room when we discussed this about the overspending, at this point in the year anyway, in general revenue fund, certain departments. So I guess, am I hearing then that at this point, in what you expect in savings, that this should not be an issue as we get further out in the year, maybe it should smooth over?
Yeah, we're cutting some costs as we speak. We do our best to cut those costs and then hope some of the revenues come in. And we work every day with that.
The savings you mentioned for the H.R. Director, does that mean you have someone coming in as part-time? Or you mentioned a $50,000 savings?
Yeah. The, there is an individual who's already a city employee who is taking on the interim human resources director responsibilities in addition to her administrative duties for a small increase in pay.
Small?
The increase in pay for that individual is $15,000 per year. The savings is, we will not pay the full human resources director salary, and we will not pay that benefits package for that. So again, $53,000 in cash savings and the benefits package savings on the family. So it's about.
So part of the salary is charged out to another line item, whatever department she currently works in?
Yeah, or, you know, depending on how we work it financially, it will all be the salary of the human resources director. But it's the same individual. We didn't hire a new individual. We added several, quite frankly, several responsibilities to the current employee with a salary that is lower than the human resources director made all by herself.
And do you have a prosecutor? Is he assistant law director?
Yes.
But I don't see the assistant law director access prosecutor.
Yeah, has a prosecutor. Don't worry, someone can be prosecuted for a bribe if they committed it in East Cleveland.
Well, I, you know, I'm just used to saying the same.
I'm kidding, yes, that is the same individual, of course.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, counsel?
Well, I don't have too much then. I don't like to make long speeches or. But last night, I had a council meeting. And the mayor brought forth the fact that we were getting a new director of human services, human resources. And I hear him saying now that, and I'd like to be corrected if I'm wrong, but I don't think I was wrong in this area because what he did say, that Melinda Kyle was going to be the new human resource director. And he was going to save $50,000. And I'm looking at the area for the human resource person. And the top salary was $60,000. But again, Ms. Smith was making $68,000. 64, but Ms. Smith was making 68, she was still above.
Yes.
Monies that was allocated in the salary board. And to quote him last night, him meaning the mayor, she would be making, I asked him what would be the difference. And he said, the mayor, that Ms. Kyle went from $45,000 to $60,000. Okay? And Ms. Smith, again, was making $68,000. And there was no mention, and when I asked, were there any credentials needed for this? Or how, or did the commission, go back and ask, did the commission approve this? And he said, yes, they did, just like, and that's on tape. That's on tape. So when I investigated or called the Tish this morning, they did nothing about it. They were saying that the, I guess, a requisition for this upgrade or increase came to them via finance, Mauricia, the payroll waiting. Okay. Nobody knew anything about the increase. I didn't know, which we get surprised quite a bit at the council meeting. And I'm just wondering, if we're supposed to be saving, we could have got a part-time individual. We still wouldn't have to pay no health care, none of those things. There's not that much worse that has to be done. We talked, we asked Ms. Melinda Kyle about civil services. She said she wasn't into that, yet she hadn't gotten into that. Of course, there are courses that you have to take for being a human resource director. And before, we were hearing that that area was not going, there was not going to be a person hired to go in that position. Now, I don't have a problem with anybody doing extra duties. I think that all over the workforce across the nation, everybody is taking on more work with less pay and doing more. And I think that in an area of this community, of this size, and fiscal commission, fiscal problems, and we're trying to save money, then I don't see giving nobody a $15,000 increase. I don't see that. I believe, and of course, everybody know where I come from, which is from labor. I believe in salaries, giving money that is earned. But I also understand that the employer can't withstand without the employees. And sometimes you have to cut, unfortunately, and you don't like doing that. Sometimes we have to stay in a position and make a little money as opposed to looking for a large increase. And I'm just wondering if this commission that I sit on is in approval of a $15,000 raise for an individual that's going to be making $8,000 less than the person that left. I don't care if they're there already or where they're coming from. There are people moving from place to place in areas, and they're making less. I can understand that. We have had things happen in the city that is now in litigation that we have to deal with. And we are trying to, going to try to make payroll for July. And there's three payrolls in July. So, and I'm not being facetious. Or when my council chair of the personnel and appointment says, welcome aboard, he was being facetious, he told me last night. When we found out that Ms. Melinda Kyle was going to make $60,000, and she's not just going to make her salary, she's going to make, from what I heard last night and what's on tape last night, is she's going to be making $60,000. Now, sometimes we get a little overzealous and maybe we say things that we don't really mean. But if we're sitting in front of an audience of residents and we tell the audience that we can't fix potholes and we can't do this, we can't do that, but I can give an individual $15,000 increase, that sounds a little off-center to me and a little off-center to my residents. So I just wanted to make that clear, that when I was asked, did I agree, did the council agree with the increase? My answer to Tish Anita was absolutely not. And this council is not going to be in favor of that. And whatever the mayor says, I'm not saying that he is a liar, but sometimes he has the tendency to misrepresent the truth.
Thanks.
Did you want a response from somebody on the commission as far as?
Anybody is welcome to get. Ms. Fields asked a question, and the mayor gave her a question that she was beginning to, she was beginning to wonder, $45,000? Or $15,000, $45,000, $55,000, $60,000, just $60,000? with, would it begin with $45,000 or $15,000, $45,000, $55,000, $60,000, just $60,000? So, you know, I'm not a mathematician and I might have to use a pencil to do all this, but my numbers come out pretty good. I know that I don't make the $300 a month coming from the city and I could add that up very well.
Would anybody finish? I'd just like to, maybe if I spell it out with math, you know, it'll help.
You can use your fingers.
Because these are the same numbers again. I gave the same numbers last night. I think everybody on the commission understands that prior to the Human Resources Director's departure, we had Belinda Kyle making $40,000, $45,000 plus we paid about $15,000 of benefits. That's $60,000 for Belinda Kyle.
He didn't say it.
When we had the Human Resources Director Anna Smith, Anna Smith was making $68,000 in salary plus about $15,000 in benefits as well. The benefits number fluctuates, but it is what it is. For the two individuals, we paid total salary of $113,000 per year plus benefits packages, if you add both of them up, of $30,000 per year. That is $140,000 that we paid for these two individuals. With the departure of Anna Smith and moving Belinda Kyle to interim Human Resource Director, we will pay $60,000 in salary to Belinda and a $15,000 benefits package, which is $75,000. Again, prior to the departure of Anna Smith, we paid for two individuals a total of $143,000. After Anna's departure, replacing her with Belinda Kyle, we will pay a total of $75,000. I think everybody understands.
No, no.
Basically, that is not what he said. What he said was she'd be making $60,000. So, but when you put in the requisition and that requisition, it puts percent to Tish. So what are you going to be looking at, Tish? How is that going to come out with the requisition? $60,000 plus benefits or $45,000 plus benefits?
I received the payroll change order, I think is what you guys call that for. And I have submitted it up the chain of command and that's where it currently sits. I have not heard back whether or not they're going to approve it at this point in time. I have not seen that.
Okay. So my question still is, is the paid $45,000 or is the benefits on top of it? Is she going to still be making $45,000?
I'm hearing from what the mayor said that she will be making $60,000 plus what she'd been making to benefits. I mean, had been received.
The dollar change shows it, because it says from two, so it shows it from whatever dollar per hour, I'm assuming that equals the $45,000, to the new dollar per hour. And I'm assuming that's multiplying out to sixty. I haven't done the math, but it just shows an hourly rate from two.
You know, I'm not going to debate it. I'm not going to argue all I'm saying to make it quite clear, but this council is not in agreement to having somebody get an increase that big and on top of benefits and when we are in a state of emergency. And I just don't believe that that is complimentary to a person that can work the figures and spend it. Of course, I can't do that, but I can express the fact that this was told in my council meeting last night and he made it very clear. So if it had not been approved by neither the council or the commission, I'll be waiting to see what happens.
I only want to add one thing about this is that the commission is not going to approve it because that's not our role. It would be the financial supervisor as they are being removed and doing their work. So, is that it? Yes. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Old business, new business. I think as far as a new business is concerned, I think we heard from the mayor already on the status of the financial recovery plan. Does anyone have anything to bring to the commission on anything that we've discussed in the past or would be concerned about in the future?
I do. I suppose it's appropriate under this section. Actually, just coming up with discussion and of course, the mayor.
Can you speak up so we can hear you?
Certainly. Thank you. We have talked at past meetings about the various options with which the city of East Cleveland is faced, some of which the city is constantly working on right now with the financial supervisor. Structural imbalance currently. And then basic options of dealing with that are figuring out how to raise revenue and/or decrease expenditures. I've heard an example right here that while I hear both the mayor and the council president acknowledging that need, figuring out how this city provides the services it needs to while doing that level of service with less revenue. You may differ on how you get there. You know, as I just heard, for two employees, one at 45 and one at 68, with one leaving, you have to figure out, you know, what you were paying $113,000 before, for before. How do you do more with less or do that same level of service with less? And you could, council presidents, I heard you suggesting, say, well, maybe we should just hire a part-time HR manager. Mayor, you were saying maybe we add some responsibilities to an employee we have. You can differ on how you get there, but one way or the other, you want to take that expenditure down if you can from the total expenditure, but still be able to provide services to the people in East Cleveland that are necessary and to the employees for a handful of the HR manager. So you've got those options of... Mayor, you've talked about some enhancements in revenue, increasing the MS fees that was just passed, looking at the camera collections, cell towers. And you also spoke about things being done on expenditure reduction, personnel and some of the other. So those are two options. Whether they get you all working or not is an open question, but you're making that progress. Long-term, the additional options facing the city that I've heard discussed are, are there further revenue enhancements? Are there further cuts? Mayor, I know I see already the cuts, so I don't know how, what more cuts you can find, but you know, those are two options of more revenue or further cuts. There's borrowing. There's a possibility that's been discussed of merger or annexation, and there's a possibility that's been raised of bankruptcy through whatever format. And I don't know that although we've discussed each of these different items, that we've looked at it methodically of what the difference, what the different options are with which the city may want to proceed. So what I wanted to request of the financial supervisor and the auditor state's office is whether it would be feasible to ask the auditor state to put together an objective assessment of what those different options are and what they would entail. And so with that, I would make a motion, but then with further discussions, maybe illicit from the auditor's office, their capacity to do that probably through, when I used to work for the auditor, we do it as MAS, I think now LGS, local health services. It was decades ago that I worked there. But through their LGS, and whether that's feasible for them to put together such an assessment of the options facing the city and what the timeframe would be.
Second motion.
Do you want to just bring it to a vote for discussion or...
Before we vote, I guess I would like some feedback from the auditor's office because I'd like to put a timeframe on that for them to have that for discussion.
That's hard. But I think it's a good question.
Wow.
No questions?
Done. We'll absolutely do whatever we can to help. That goes without saying. Timeframe? Well, we have, we're working with the city and putting the plan, hopefully putting the plan together, running numbers. I would think that could be in conjunction with...
Like the revenue enhancements?
Revenue enhancements, expenditure reductions, we've already mentioned a few. The merger, bankruptcy, borrowing. We can give scenarios. We can run the numbers on what could be borrowed.
And I would submit that independently, some of them have been assessed. For instance, the borrowing, I know that that was...
That's done.
Into, you know, and yeah, I think that some of the work's already been done. Certainly do some more work in the compile.
I would say...
They want to huddle.
No muss.
Yeah. How about, when's the plan due? I can't remember the date.
Of course, I don't have it written down. Sometime in August.
August 28th, end of August. Not like I'm counting.
No, that's why I figured.
It's 128, 120 days from the day of this pass.
Why don't we say the end of August? Would that be too long? That would give us a couple of months?
I would accept that and revise my motion to ask that we prepare that timeframe.
Okay. All right. I will get back to our boss and see if that works.
The plan.
Because it sounds like it's not going to be done by just you two.
Which direction am I going to go?
I'm concerned right now on that.
Your suggestion is well taken and better late than never because we were asking before, could not the auditors help prepare something? I think they did come up with a study that they paid for. What was that? They... Yeah, they paid for a study. But also that, and I would like to let you know that the council has engaged King and Buckley to also deal with the different options that might be available for us. And they're working on that right now. And I think the more help we get, the better off we will be. And like I said, better late than never. I don't know, whatever appreciated is the engagement of the auditors in your suggestion. And I think all the help is well appreciated. I am open and receptive to the need.
So now moved to the August date, are you still interested in Saturday? Let's take a vote.
August of 2015, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It's on tape. Okay. Rob Frost?
Yes.
Mayor Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Sharon, California State. I had all of Sharon and her, yes. It's like, what was it, I was paranoid about my phone. I think that's a really great suggestion and I'm glad that Rob forwarded that. What I heard really the most is objective. And I think with us all sitting here, we have tended to move away from our objectivity. And I think that a third party like the auditor's office is ideal and certainly they've seen everything in state government. So I think really they'll bring a lot to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else? What's that?
Not to the laziness, but you know, I think everybody knows the effort that's underway in terms of...
Yes, yes.
You know, asking the people to sign a petition to at least explore formally the merger scenario so that those signatures are still being... And I believe people will be successful in getting enough of the signatures.
Yeah, I would, I don't think that this should in any way stop other efforts that are ongoing, whether it be Buckley-Kings or the merger. I think this can certainly keep on going, but I think that the study would add just another layer of objectivity to it.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I think that sometimes I get what the mayor said.
Twist it.
Did you say that the petition that you are circulating or going to circulate is to explore the idea or what might happen or how it might come out with the merger? Or are you asking the people to sign petition to bring in the commission that is part of the process for a merger? Is this, and I hope I said it right, to explore?
I've read that petition, manager. I've read the petition aloud in council meetings on at least two occasions and I read the petition aloud in another public meeting. And I believe that you were present at at least two of those readings. I would read it again right now if I had.
I'm answering a question. Is the petition saying to explore merger? Or is it to deal with a commission to be put in place that this petition would generate? That's all I'm asking.
I've read the...
No.
I've read...
That's a simple question. That's a simple question, yes or no?
Would you like me to talk to you now?
You talk all the time.
Chair, mayor, have a seat. Thank you. Again, I've read the petition aloud in two separate council meetings. I've read it aloud in additional public meetings. If I had the petition here with me today, I would read it aloud again. The petition is a public record. I'm happy to give you a copy of the petition language. If I had it with me right now, I would not only read it again, I would give it to you so you could read it yourself.
Okay. I'm not going, and I'm not going to belabor this meeting. All I'm saying is what the mayor has said up here and said, I would just want a clarification for the residents that are sitting here and for the commission. If you're out there signing, if the people are out there signing a petition, you're saying one thing and then you're saying another. So if the people can, sign what they want, but be careful when you're signing them. I'm sure you read them.
You should always...
They know. The only thing that I quote from Mr. O'Maze is that I don't quote too many things.
I know a lot of us try not to, but go ahead.
He said, and it comes to, again, fruition if you don't read.